Meeting order, and we are now live streaming correction. So we're now live streaming. Okay, we're gonna start with a moment of reflection. Okay, thank you very much. So you can make a disclosure of your interest at this point or any point in time through the meeting should want to rise. And next we have confirmation of the agenda. Counselor. Counselor Wilhelm.
I would like to declare a conflict with, I'm trying to get it open, but I believe at some point. Two point one, the O P A for St. Mary's cement. We are in.
Yes, it is.
We are in discussions with St. Mary's over a major dust bill.
Okay, so you're declaring a conflict of that. Any other conflicts? Sorry, Counselor Wilhelm, I knew that and I didn't look your way. Okay, seeing none. Confirmation of the agenda, we do have two additions. One will be delegation item seven point five point two. Climate change coordinator extension and Josh Boersen will be representing the grain farmers, District Nine making that. And we also have a for closed session, we are going to have a verbal update regarding pending litigation. So if I could have a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions, that would be great. Counselor Wilhelm, Counselor McDermott. All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you very much. And then we're gonna move on to consent agenda. We have items five point one to five point nine and the December second, two thousand and twenty one council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled for discussion? See hands up. So I have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items five point one to five point nine. And approves the December second, two thousand and twenty one council minutes moved by Counselor Kellam, seconded by. Counselor Ite. Those in favor? And that's carried. Okay, so now we're moving on to public meetings. And on seven point two point one. And we have James Parkin. And is David Han ready of the Vortorium. Clementos Director of Land and Resources and this is to do with the O P A application. So if we can get them on board. We got David Han ready up there twice.
They might have logged in using the same link.
Okay, so they could. Come on screen, that'd be great.
Sorry about that. I was trying to, trying to hit buttons and it wasn't working.
Imagine that.
Imagine that.
That's had that problem.
It's had that problem.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes. Good morning, can you hear me all right? Okay, so I'm getting a lot of. Yeah. Okay, do you guys want to try carrying on? Can't hear him. Just hang on a second. Oh, that's one.
I think, I think James is, James is gonna be speaking mostly, but if I am directed with any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, okay, James.
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me now? I've made a couple of adjustments.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is James Parkin. I'm a planner at M H B C. Planning and David is the Director of Land and Resources at with St. Mary's as has been introduced. Our delegation this morning is just in simply in support of the staff report and to answer any questions. We appreciate the work that's gone into the report that's before you by the staff. As well as all the reviewing agencies at different levels of government. The approval of this O P A allows the land to be red designated, re-designated to permit the extension of the quarry onto these lands. And what that does is it makes available additional resources that are suitable for a range of essential products. Including the limestone, that is the raw material feeding the cement plant it in at St. Mary's. The application supports the continued operation of the plant and the economic benefits that go along with that for the community. All of the background work that's required for by the official plan for these types of applications. As well as the provincial legislation. And the Aggregate Resources Act license, all of that work has been. Completed, it's been submitted and reviewed over the past year or so. And it's been accepted as outlined in the staff report before you. So we simply wanted to appear in support of that and we're asking for your approval of the official plan amendment this morning and. We're happy to answer any questions about the proposal or the work that's been completed.
Okay, thank you, James. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions yet. We'll be dealing with this matter. In maybe fifteen minutes or so. So if you want to. You're available, say fifteen minutes, just in case there's some questions.
Perfect.
I don't anticipate too many, but you never know.
That, that's why we're here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I've got a motion here that Perth County Council receives a delegation. On item seven point two point one county officials plan amendment number one eighty eight. From James Parkin of M H B C Planning Partner and David Hand ready of the Tori. I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, the Tori, but Tim. Cementos Director of Land Resources moved by you, Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Hurley. All in favor? Let's carry. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the next one and that is Josh Boersom. So we'll get him added to the screen. Not there? Oh. Well, that's gonna be tough to do the delegation if he's not available. Well. With counsel's indulgence, I'm thinking we're gonna move on to staff reports and if he comes. Then we'll go back to the delegation. Does that work for everyone? No sense sitting waiting. Rhonda?
He could be, he could be experiencing. Internet problems. Mine is, is keeps freezing and going in and out.
Okay, well.
Could be having problems there too, so.
We'll give him a chance. We, if he does get connected, but we're gonna move on to staff reports. And just so we're not sitting here all day. Okay, first on staff report, C A O. And. That is seven point one point one members of council vaccination policy. And he was. Marion's coming in to do that? She's here.
Can you open yours up?
No. I've got. Something on. Yeah, we tricked Marion because we moved away from the delegation because we didn't have it.
Oh, great.
We came up a little quicker. We had a delegation that just hasn't quite got connected yet, so we just moved on. Wondering why it's.
No problem.
Okay, Marion.
All right, good, good morning, through the warden. Just one, two, as per council's request, we have established a members of council vaccination policy. And Tyler has drafted an associated bylaw. You do have the information in front of you. Essentially, it is the same as the non-union one. So either. I will send each member of council a attestation form. They will complete it. And basically, if you declare that you are unvaccinated for any reason, you would go on to our testing program. The only nuance here is what we'd be looking for is you would be testing if you were performing county business. And I don't think that you need to necessarily do testing and recording twice a week because really you're coming here every second Thursday. So to attend an in-council meeting, that would be what we are looking for. Outside of that, were there any questions?
Counselor McDermott.
On page thirty nine, just sort of the wording, it's expected to comply with all health and safety measures as outlined by the county and their supervisor. We don't have a supervisor.
Okay, I can remove that.
Oh, that's okay.
Questions for Marion, Counselor Hurley.
Yeah, no, it's definitely quite interesting, of course, having some youth in the public school system over the holidays here. They've sent home testing kits on if you feel it's necessary and. I pay what the province recommends and what comes in the kit. You wanna talk about conflicting? It's at its finest. It's, it's, it's so bizarre. I'm lost for words and I'm not even going in. I just had to say that. But it's really quite interesting what the kit recommends and how accurate and how. You know, how much faith to put into it compared to this. It's.
I'm actually gonna stop you there, Daryl. I want, that's fine, your comment, but we're dealing strictly with this policy, so.
Yeah, you're right. I'm just saying it is conflicting, so.
Other questions or comments with regards to this policy? I'm not seeing any hands go up. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the members of council vaccination policy report. With the Counselor McKenzie, second by Counselor Wilhelm. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? Let's carry. Yeah, and we're gonna prove it later in the bylaws. Anyway, thank you very much, Marion.
All right, and I'll update the supervisor in a moment. Thank you.
Hey, any chance we got Mr. Boersen on?
If I can hop in here, I actually just touched base with him. He's having, he had some internet issues and he thinks he'll be about fifteen minutes.
Okay, we're gonna carry on. You can just contact him back and say we're gonna keep going and when he's available, we'll have him. Okay, so we're moving on. Planning Services and first on the agenda. Is county official plan amendment number one eighty eight. And that would be Adam. And we'll just have to get Adam up and have Bob leave again. Once he gets his. Link filled out here. Morning, Adam. Good morning, Sally. And if we could, maybe we can bring up Mr. Park and Mr. Hand ready again. If that's possible. Okay, we got James back. And we got them both. Okay, Adam, we're ready. Take her away.
Good morning, Warden, members of council. I'm going to share a screen and walk council briefly through the proposed official plan amendment. And just walk through the site plan showing the pit and the quarry operation. And then we'll have any questions. Mr. Henratty and Mr. Parkin are available. Trust everybody can see the map in front of them.
Yep.
Okay. So the application today is for an official plan amendment to the county official plan. And the subject property here is hatched and this property right now is got a bunch of different designations on it. It's agricultural. It's got a little bit of environmental here and then the rest of this light and dark brown colors are. Potential limestone resource and sand and gravel resource designations. The application today would redesignate this entire property into this burgundy color, which would identify it as a licensed parent quarry. And limestone resource. The site plan, I'll just show council briefly here, the extraction phases that will occur. The extraction operations on the east side of the subject lands currently in the town of St. Mary's will basically transition over to the west. Phase one of the extraction will begin at the south end of the property. It will then move south towards, towards the Tens River, towards line five, and then once this area is extracted. The following two phases will then move northwards. And at the end of the day, when the pit is exhausted, it will basically be, this will be a quarry lake. And that's, that's just a very quick overview of the extraction operation. Again, what we're doing today is admitting the official plan schedule. And changing the land use designation on the property. This application was originally made back in October twenty twenty, just by way of background. And it did have a public meeting at that time and the application was deferred until the various technical reports could be reviewed by. The relevant provincial agencies. Over the course of early and mid twenty twenty one, various provincial ministries such as the M O E, M and R, Omafra have. Reviewed the technical reports that were submitted with the pit application. And the provincial sign offs were all attached in the, in the report package to council. And at this time, it's appropriate to move forward to change the official plan designation so that the proponent can continue working towards. Site plan approval with the Ministry of Natural Resources. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have. And again, Mr. Henratty and Mr. Parkin are also here to assist with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, questions from council with regards to this application. We have Adam, we have Sally, and we have two representatives from the St. Mary's cement. Counselor McDermott.
Yeah, James, from the start to probably finish on this. How long do you think it takes for an application like this to move through the system?
He's muted. You're muted.
Apologies. Yeah, so for an application like this to move through the review system. Is several years, which is a very general answer because there is quite a range that. It, you know, it takes at least a year to, to go through typically. Two or three and sometimes many, many more than that because of the amounts of review and scrutiny that it's given.
Again, Counselor McDermott.
Yeah, David, at the rate that they're gonna extract stuff, how many years do they?
One of the, one of the reasons for this particular application is because the overburden is a bit thinner on this site and. The overburden is comprised of a sand and gravel resource that we would be utilizing in our aggregate division in addition to the. Limestone that's beneath it for our cement division. That's not present currently at our existing site to the east where the overburden is much thicker. But it is comprised of a very fine-grained till materials. So. In conjunction with the other property where, you know, there's ample reserves there for the next. Forty or fifty years for the cement plant and the sand and gravel will probably. Last our aggregate business, I would say about eight or nine years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for any of the individuals here? I'm not seeing any hands. I have a motion in front of me that the council of Perth County received a report entitled Perth County Official Plan Plan Amendment number one eight eight. By Rosedale Securities Limited. A bracket St. Mary's cement dated December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one affecting lands described as lot twenty nine. Concession Thames Towns with Pur South and Noam Municipally as four, six, oh, eight, line five. And that council of, the council of the county of Perth approved. The official plan amendment number one eighty eight as contained in Schedule A of this report. Do I have a mover in a second? Removed by Counselor McDermott, second by Counselor Hurley. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next report and that is. From Melissa. Seven point two point two. Will we get Melissa?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning.
So I've had the pleasure of meeting Melissa on Tuesday in the meal distribution. Not all of council here will have a clue who you are, well, they know who you are by name.
Yeah.
You wanna just introduce yourself briefly and then we'll move on to your report?
Uh, yes, so my name is Melissa Gassick and I'm a new planner in the county of Perth and. Working currently in Perth East. I started in mid-October and I've been getting acquainted with, with the staff, stakeholders. Applications. You know, learning about procedures and people and I'm here to, to assist all members, all both councils. At the county level and at the local level. Today, I'm, I have a broad planning experience in the private sector and, and public sector and. Like I said, I'm here to assist the public and, and councils. As, as a planner and today I'll be presenting. Ministerial zoning order. Let me just share my screen here with you. Okay, so this is the minister's zoning order for Percon. Percon Development Industrial Subdivision just south of Melverton. So let me give you a bit of a background. So Percon Development submitted applications for official plan amendment and plan of subdivision. Back in March of twenty twenty one. In conjunction with a proposal to develop thirty five hectares of agricultural lands. And turn it into industrial subdivision. Subsequently, the planning department reviewed the applications, applications for completeness. And at the time identified a, a number of studies required to deem the applications complete. However. The developer failed to fill these requirements. Following this, the developer advised the township of Perth East. That they were seeking the support of Perth East Council for a minister's zoning order. And Perth East Council supported the applications. At their June twenty second meeting of this year and forwarded the resolution to Perth Council, Perth County Council. On November twenty third, twenty twenty one, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. Made the M Z O, which is called also called Regulation seven eighty three dash twenty one. And this regulation was filed with the Office of the Register of Regulations on November twenty fourth. So the subject property is located, as the slide indicates, is located at the corner of line sixty one and Perth Road. One thirty one just south of Melverton and the Mornington Ward of the Township of Perth East. Um, this is the layout of the proposed subdivision. Still in consultation. There might be some changes, you know, that are coming, but we will see how that, how that unfolds. So. They're essentially proposing to develop a portion of the subject property and turn it into industrial subdivision. The area is property. Of the property is seventy four point forty five hectares and the area of the subdivision is approximately thirty five hectares. The, this is the proposed schematic draft plan of subdivision. Includes lots and blocks and is totaling twenty seven point four hectares. The remainder. Of the parcels. Of the lands are roads, stormwater management and a woodlot. The Remnant Farm Parcel is proposed to be thirty nine point eighty five hectares. So would this minister's order, zoning order information, what it, what it essentially does is. It rezones the land to industrial zone M one dash thirty five. As shown on the M Z O map, which is in my report. And the rezoning permits the following. Uses identified in the industrial zone M one of the Perth East zoning bylaw. Uses identified within the agricultural, commercial, industrial zone or A C M zone. An animal clinic, a farm equipment establishment, a farm supply outlet. Or a stormwater management or all of these. So this is the map of the zoning order. The area of the site at the northeast will remain on natural resources, environment zone two or N R E two. As shown on the map and the M Z O also rezones the land adjacent to N R E two. As well as along the drain to adjacent land zone or L Z L A L Z. To prohibit any buildings or structures except as permitted within the adjacent land overlay under Perth East zoning bylaw. This area is also regulated through the Conservation Authorities Act and more specifically by Maitland Valley Conservation Authority. Um, so. Section forty seven of the Planning Act allows. Allows the, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to make M Z Os. This discretion to issue an order lies exclusively with the minister. The purpose, the purpose of the order is to govern land uses within areas subject to the order. The minister is not required to post public notice prior to making an order. But the minister must give notice once the order is made within thirty days in such manner as the minister considers appropriate. The minister can grant minor variances to the order or initiate amendments. If an amendment is requested by a person, public body, the minister must give notice in that, in that instance. Um, the developer to date, the developer. Let me just, so, so basically the developer to date, what you see on the slide. To date, developer has provided all the studies as indicated on the screen and. They're currently updating their planning justification report to reflect the M Z O. And the submission of the planning justification report and the rest of the studies. And drawings for the draft plan of subdivision is expected to be received shortly. The M Z O changes. The land uses, as I said earlier, from agricultural to employment slash industrial uses. While preserving natural heritage woodlot to the northeast. And at the same time provides additional protection through the introduction of the adjacent land zone next to the said woodlot. The aim of the M Z O is to expedite planning approvals and the creation of employment industrial lands near Melverton. Thank you. That ends my presentation.
Thank you, Melissa. You could just end the screen sharing. I can see some faces. That's great.
Yes. Just do that in a second. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, any questions or comments for Melissa on her report? Councillor Casenberg.
Uh, thank you for the report. Can you just outline for us exactly what constituents of a report that that documents, et cetera, that lie ahead that the county will expect for this application, for this action?
Um, sorry, if you could repeat the question, you mean what type of documents are going to be required for the submittal?
Exactly. I I think that there there, if I remember right, when the applicant sought the MZO, there were some things that were outstanding at the county that they had not provided, if I remember correctly. And so I just want to make sure I understand what things remain for them to submit to the county to move forward, even though they have this MZO in hand.
So, um, through Warden and members of council, um, I think they have all their studies essentially are ready. They're just at the moment, uh, as far as I know, they're just tweaking the layout of the subdivision. Um, if you, if you remember my last slide and showed the reports that have submitted to us and that have been already completed. So they're just going to update those reports slightly to reflect the current regime, which is the MZO, which kind of outlines the law of the land, basically, if you will. So they will update all their reports to reflect that decision and then submit again. Um, they have, you know, like a geotechnical report, they have site servicing drawings. Site servicing drawings are currently being reviewed as we speak. Um, all the other studies, uh, they will be resubmitted again once we receive the official submittal from them, which is a subdivision application.
Uh, Sally has a comment.
Thank you through you, Warden, to council. Um, the couple of things that we were missing were really related to the official plan amendment, which was their first application. And they included a justification for the need for the land and an agriculture impact assessment. So now that those uses have been permitted, it makes those requirements almost moot. So um, the purpose of those studies was to determine whether or not this was this area was needed to be added as a settlement area uh, to the to the Melbourne settlement area and whether or not they would have or to to measure the degree to which it would have an impact on neighboring agricultural uses. Um, but now that those uses are all permitted, the question goes unanswered at the moment.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? I'm not seeing any hands. I have a motion that Perth County Council received. The report ministerial zoning order for Percon Development, Inc., Industrial Subdivision at Park Lot Six, Concession Two, Mornington Ward, Township of Perth East for information. Moved by councillor McDermott, second by councillor Hurley. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Melissa and Sally. Okay, I believe we do now have Josh available. So we're gonna just, uh, before we go to ECTA, we're going back to delegation. Morning, Josh.
Good morning, Warden and councillors. I must offer my apologies for my delayed presence here at the rural areas of this county still suffer sometimes from connectivity issues as many of you uncertain or well aware. I thank you for taking some time here this morning to have.
We're ready for your presentation.
Very good. Well, thank you, uh, councillors and and Warden H's in there. I guess for uh, for the members from Perthies, this will probably be maybe a bit of a recap again, but I I hope that many of you or all of you had the time to read the the letter, the correspondence that I sent in and further to that, I wanted to make myself available if there were any questions and then just kind of highlight a few things, I guess. Uh, and try and understand a bit of the process or the intent behind this, uh, climate change, uh, process or survey or or a report that's going to come before council here. So I was just reading the survey here while I was listening to the planning report and kind of going through. I'm gonna just stick to the portions that affect agriculture directly, I guess, as a as a director for GFO or the Grain Farmers of Ontario here representing Perth County. It it seemed prudent to come before county as a whole as well and not just my own municipal council as well. Thank the member Darrell for kind of prodding me along to make sure that this this message came through. Um, kind of the biggest takeaways from this was a lot of the 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 leading information in here and then the summary presented to council. I I don't understand where council can go with this information when, as it pertains to agriculture. A lot of the the survey questions kind of surrounded, um, you know, how are we going to decrease emissions from farm vehicles and and while that's a, that's a certainly a noble thing, um, how this council is going to have any influence over that decision kind of strikes me odd, if you will, like we're already being impacted by federal and provincial regulations to this effect and and while we can always do better, you know, in the county, farmers are probably, I think, leading or if not leading, very close to leading uh, the charge on our environmental footprint and impacts. Like this is what we do every day. We deal with weather, we deal with the environment and it's important that to us all the time, but I don't know that, you know, adding a tax or burdening the taxpayers or uh, or or what you're going to actually influence out of this climate change survey and uh, plan or 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 process. If, as I mentioned to the council in Perth East, if the intent here is to tick a box or to fulfill a requirement of a higher level of government so that funding is available to the county, I understand. I can understand that. I understand that process. I don't agree with that. I I think that there's other issues further up in the in the political chain that need dealt with when it comes to that regard, but as a municipal government, um, if your hands are tied, I understand why you might have gone through the motions. But what it boils down to is like, what are we going to do with this information? The survey presented to you, the demographics in there were, uh, were largely urban and heavily influenced by people who maybe have a very poor understanding of agriculture to begin with. If they have any understanding whatsoever. And for them to say, you know, one of the key takeaways in the survey was about converting farm vehicles to to electric, electrifying farm vehicles. And and the the briefing and backgrounder said, oh, this is only a difficulty level of four to six out of ten. Whoever presented that information to the survey respondents was either incredibly misguided or horribly ill-informed. The ability to electrify farm vehicles in the short term here is going to be uh, decades out in a practical manner in the way that we currently farm. That's not to say that large steps aren't maybe being made, especially in the small, uh, small robotics field, which may be the way farming does end up going, uh, you know, in the future. And impeding that growth is certainly not something we're out to do. But at the same time, we can't tie the hands of the farmers in our county here in the interim until we get to that point where that technology is available and it's, I don't see it as the place of municipal government to be involved in that process very much. Certainly not in in restricting or or funding projects of this nature. It has implications across the entire country. For the most part, agriculture is, of course, Canada-wide and that's probably where that should be focused. It's, uh, it's going to be tricky to navigate, no doubt, but at the same time, uh, you know, just just yesterday, there was a budget announcement from the government saying that they're going to give out a dollar forty-seven for every one thousand dollars uh, of eligible farm expenses to farmers as a credit for the carbon tag. On the, on our farm, that might equate to a half or third or less of the actual costs incurred just simply from the direct carbon tax cost. The stuff that was incurred on fuel and on eating barns and drying grains, things of those nature. Doesn't include anything lost to infrastructure, transportation, added cost to inputs or anything along the lines that are totally lost. So we're, we're already facing this amount of pressures and certainly we don't need more from our municipal governments and certainly the taxpayers don't need more either. There should be no taxpayer in this county that is obligated to pay for improvements on our farm, in my opinion. We will, we'll work our, we do our best as always to try and improve as we go and we're learning, but this takes time. I mean, as I mentioned, uh, in in a previous presentation, we, uh, we're making changes on our farm on an annual basis, uh, you know, slowly but surely trying to learn. We've, uh, we've run before we, uh, before we walked before in this field and it's cost us a significant amount of money. So we've started to back, not backpedal per se, but certainly choose our steps carefully moving forward. And so this is going to take five, ten, fifteen, twenty years to learn, uh, in all cases and all things. So my, my significant concerns, I guess, were when I, when I saw the survey, I filled it out myself. I I followed this process through. We tried to get in touch with the previous coordinator that hired. It was difficult to to find a time that would align with our schedules to to sit down and meet. We were hoping to have a meeting with the entire district, all the delegates here. There's eight of us in the county. They represent the grain farmers. And, uh, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't possible before she left, which we were not aware she was going to do. And then, of course, we had a new person come in and it was told that we would have that contact information passed on and then hopefully we can reconnect again. And prior to us receiving any information or learning of who this person was or or any further information or dialogue, uh, I heard that there was a potential full plan or proposal in front of council that had received very little input from, uh, from the agricultural community, it appeared. So I I don't know that that this is going to be, um, of significant value to the county unless the intent is to ensure long-term funding. Um, and even then I I caution that that pathway because it almost always seems to come with caveats. The government has a way of tying hands of lower municipalities as best as they are able. So um, you know, there, yeah, I I could go on and on all day, but I respectfully, I apologize for being late and I want to be cognizant of your of your time. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to to answer them. And if not in this space, then certainly reach out to me as well. Uh, I'm available. My contact information is on the Grain Farmers of Ontario website, GFO.ca or any of our delegates for that matter that might be sitting in your respective geographies as well. We have delegates right from Listowel on down to Mitchell, Saint Mary's and over towards New Hamburg. So we cover the, uh, we cover the county as best as we are able. So, uh, Warden H's and I thank you for your time and council members, please.
Okay, thanks, Josh. Councillor Casenberg said he lost his audio. You got it back there, Councillor Casenberg? So he's going iffy. Anyway, we're going to keep going. Uh, thank you for your presentation. I guess I'm gonna open it up to questions, but before I do, I'm gonna say like this is truly in its infant stage. And, you know, I agree with a lot of your comments. Uh, but I'm gonna open it up to questions and then I'm gonna maybe have a comment at the end. So I think your hand is up, Councillor McKenzie.
Yeah, um, thanks, Josh, for the presentation. Warden H's and it's kind of, uh, reiterated, I guess, what my main comment was going to be in that what we have is a basis to start from and we can build on that. And I guess one of my other comments is, uh, you know, by working together, we can achieve a lot. And and I think just by bashing what we have is not going to solve anything. But by working together, I think we can, uh, we can achieve a bit. Um, you're familiar, I assume, with Brendan Bryan?
If you're asking me about the chair, Mr. Brendan Bernie?
Is that his name, Bernie? Okay. Yeah, so obviously you're familiar with him. And I guess the other question I have, are you familiar with the Guelph statement that came out about a month ago, November the eleventh, I believe?
Can you elaborate?
I have highlights here of it and, um, basically it came out, uh, uh, I believe around November the eleventh, I think that was the date. And, uh, the purpose of it is there's there's five priorities, I believe, but the first priority is tackling climate change and environmental protection to support greenhouse gas emission reductions and the long-term viability of the sector while positioning producers and processors to seize economic opportunities from evolving consumer demands. And the the statement goes on, uh, it acknowledges the continuous work done by farmers to produce food while maintaining Canada's natural resources. Canadian farmers have always been good stewards of the land and have solid track record of sustainable agricultural sound management practices, innovation and new technologies. Over the past two decades, farmers have doubled the value of production while stabilizing greenhouse gas emissions. In that time, the amount of agricultural emissions per dollar of GDP generated by the sector has dropped by half. The policy framework highlights the five priorities and the first one, as I said before, is climate change and the environment. And there was a quote issued by your chair of the Grain Farmers of Ontario. The priority areas in this new policy framework shared by the FPT align with grain farming and our own priority areas at Grain Farmers of Ontario. We look forward to working with all levels of government to ensure the future of grain farming, said Brendan Bryan, Chair of the Grain Farmers of Ontario. Grain farmers in Ontario are part of the solution when it comes to protecting the environment with the wide number of practices they have adapted to promote good land stewardship and their willingness to be early adapters and innovation that will help protect the land. And I I just circle back to my original comment. I think if we work together with this, um, you know, we we can end up with something that that'll be worthwhile, but to sit back and just find fault with what's going on and the survey and that. Um, I I don't think it's going to achieve anything. So I just, I just put that out there for you. It it looks to me like like what you're, what you're advocating and what the Grain Farmers of Ontario, provincial bodies advocating or maybe at odds with one another.
Other comments or questions? Reply response to that, Josh?
Uh, arguably, I would disagree that we are at odds. What what I was suggesting is that this report came to council incomplete. Or this or the survey was undertaken without wholesome input from our organization. We attempted to make contact several times to to act collaboratively with your coordinator and with this process and and we were unable to do so prior to this being presented. And that's part of where our issues come from. And then the background information being presented was not done so in a consultative manner. It was taken ad hoc or at will from other sources without consulting the farmers locally about the processes that are done here and what we've already done and what we do. There was discussion about how organic is, you know, kind of the way to move forward. And I'm not here to discuss different practices of agriculture, but I will say that I have issues with that being presented in that manner. There are alternatives and there are differences. But certainly it does need to be a dialogue. I agree. And it needs to be a dialogue that takes time. This feels rushed. This feels hurried along because we couldn't even get involved in the process. And granted, the situation we find ourselves in with with COVID is has certainly not made this any easier. But at the same time, uh, and I would agree with you realistically that we need more consultation and we need to work together, but we also can't be in a position where it becomes adversarial because that's our only second course of action if it wasn't undertaken in a consultative manner from the outset. That's where my concerns lie. That's where my concerns lie.
Counselor Casenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've had to sort of adjust my audience, so I hope it doesn't uh sound. Uh thank you for uh approaching councils. I think there are a few things worth noting. Uh the first is that the survey, of course, was but one of many tools in the research toolbox that were used. In the generation of the background information in the report. Um certainly, uh part of the research that was done included. Evaluating the position statements and information of the various organizations involved in agriculture in Ontario. And so if you feel that that uh the Perth County Grain Farmers have a different perspective or had. Different nuance that probably should have been included. In the website and other materials that were consulted with Grain Farmers of Ontario. Further. In terms of that consultation, uh the Perth County Federation of Agriculture was was consulted over the course of the project and. And that was perceived to be a reasonable approach to find the local voice. I don't disagree with you, Josh, that that. Perhaps, you know, with logistics problems. Uh there could have been more done than, more opportunity. Uh but at the same time, uh there there. There is a climate crisis and um and work was being done and needed to be done. Have, I actually have but one question for you, I think. Uh to me, I'd like to hear your response to. Report, uh the plan that came to us has exactly two recommendations. Uh about and for agriculture. Which of those or both of those are are objectionable to you and the organization? And in fact. I think you should clarify, are you talking about? GFO or are you talking about local directors and group?
You'll have to forgive me, uh councillor, I'm trying to find that report now because I don't have it in front of me at this time. So if you have those recommendations in front of you, perhaps you can uh relay that information to me.
Give you a quick summary, if maybe. Uh the first is that agriculture in Perth County be more broadly consulted. And the second is that we initiate a clean water project in the county.
Well, there is no objections to those proposals in the in the plan, I'm uh, but is there further information to come? Because that was not undertaken in the survey. The survey asked about electrifying vehicles and and the. And the whole process revolved around in terms of consultation, had nothing to do with that. So I don't disagree that those are noble things to do, but why was the other information even included then? What's the purpose?
The purpose and I can't speak because I'm on coordinator committee or I'm on the coordinator, I believe. Argumented Mr. Warden that the the broad purpose was to explore all possible options that are available across all of the sectors. Uh in uh our economy in Perth County and and. Insight and information and even ideas about how that could work. Um perhaps the survey uh um, you know, missed the mark in some points and and I can't comment on that. Particularly, I did fill it out. Um but uh I I would suggest that. As Counselor McKenzie said, uh you know, the first recommendation uh is pretty fundamental to what you asked, which is more consultation. More engagement with citizens and with the groups who are involved in in the day-to-day. Of uh of interacting with the environment in ways positive or negative.
Okay, uh councillor Deputy Warden Nagus has her hand up.
I think we need to go back to why and how we started uh getting a climate change coordinator and. Maybe I have the wrong misunderstanding, but so we want to improve what we're doing. So the municipality took it on to hire someone to come in and and look at all this, right? So the goal here isn't for the municipality to tell the farmers what to do, do it or when to do it. I think the goal here was to find out what we're all doing and we're all doing something. The municipalities, the farmers, everybody is is slowly doing some things, but what we can improve upon. I think is what's coming out of this report and how we can move forward. But I don't think that the municipalities are going to. Stand over the farmers and tell the farmers what to do. And I think that's where the misconception is here, that. Some of the people think that that's what the municipality is going to do. So do I have the wrong understanding of this? Like, I'm thinking that. We want to keep moving forward. The municipality wants to report on what they're doing. The agriculture group can form a committee and we would help them form that committee, but then it's up to them. To implement and how they want to move forward. It's not up to the municipality to tell the farmers what to do. Can someone tell me if I'm on the right path here or am I way out to lunch in this?
I'm assuming you're in the right path. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that question, but basically you've kind of hit the nail on the head. This is the beginning and, yeah, we're not, we're not here to tell farmers how to farm. Um that's for sure. Anyway, Counselor Hurlick's waving his hand, so I'm gonna let him speak.
No, I I I mean, I could sit here for a while within this policy or within this report. First talk of implementing idling bylaws, such activity like that. String boards organic. Again, this is why Mr. Burson is is quite concerned. Again, I'm not here to debate organics or conventional farming, but us farmers are continuously talking and using technology. Onyx fertilizer placement, et cetera. But that's the way. County, um. We're always on the track. There's talk of that through policy. I mean, look, listen. Anybody knows when you need to control somebody, you do it through policy and government. It's still this technique in the book. And to say that that couldn't happen here is wrong. Um we know this already with conservation authorities. Credit some is good, but this blanket policy has the effect. Sometimes, and that isn't what we need. They're talking of implementing. Bylaws around idling. Pushing board electrification, um. So it is concerning. It was a little heavy. It was just a little heavy and the board, the the grain farmers did reach out and to see that the. We're we're, the grain farmers are trying to trash and not collaborate and work together. That's insulting, actually. I'm 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 kind of dismayed as a councillor. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you gotta also remember here, folks, this was only the initial report. It's basically a draft. Nothing's completely cut and stone yet by any stretch of the imagination. Uh other comments from other councillors? Go, raise your hands at once. I'm gonna make a couple, three comments. Like, there were some things in that report that I agreed with completely. There were some things in that report I was. I'll be honest, not really that satisfied with, but that's, it's a work in progress. I think the one thing that's kind of been. And I'm gonna say that as a, this is a farmer myself. Agriculture tends to take the brunt for water issues. In the province of Ontario. It's always farmer runoff. It's always this, it's always that. And I know councillor Wilhelm knows exactly what I'm gonna say. Cause I've said it before and I've said it to the Ministry of Environment. As long as cities are allowed to do legal bypasses or raw sewage into the rivers, which ends up in the lakes. You can institute all the clean water things you want to do on a, in agriculture, but we are a fraction of the problem. It has to be in a complete encompassing of all cities, towns and agriculture, not just agriculture. Um. I read a stat here a couple of years ago, there was more fertilizer placed on lawn than there was in agricultural crops. And if you think about it, that sounds ridiculous, but there's a lot of lawns. And they, you know, there's not, there's not very many lawns that don't look really great from watering and fertilizer. So it it it's a bigger picture in total. But uh it it is in infant stage. And I know when it came to Perth South. One of my questions was. Uh, yes, we do create carbon by running tractors in the fields and combines. People also want to eat, but what I wanted to see was the benefits of agriculture and how much carbon could be sequestered. Through crops grown by agriculture and we did a little quick investigation. And one acre of corn that produces two hundred and twenty bushels sequesters ten ton of carbon in one year. And Josh, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's the figure that we found. So you have to also not just look at the negative side of agriculture, you have to look at the positive side of agriculture. And agricultural crops will sequester far more carbon. Than just planting half your farming trees, put it that way. Anyway, if that's uh all the comments and questions, then we're gonna move on. But I had to make my point.
Thank you, uh, Morton, and uh thank you for the points and uh. If I leave it with anything, I'd like to leave it with the fact that uh. We still do need to work together and move forward and I would like to have this be. A consultancy basis rather than a uh an adversarial basis. Believe me, it's a lot easier to work from the back end than it is to try and come at something from the front hand on.
I agree. They're actually, Ron, to mention agriculture, there already is one, it's just never met. If I'm, I stand to be corrected, but I'm sure we have an agriculture, it just never met. Not for a long, long time, not since I've been five years according to councillor Will.
That's true.
Anyway, so we will uh do our best to make this a truly collaborative. Uh. Process from this point on. Okay, anyone else? I have a motion. Perth County Council receive the delegation on item seven point five point two, climate change coordinator. Two thousand and twenty-two, extension from Josh Burson. Grain Farmers of Ontario District Nine, move by. Councillor Duncan, second by councillor Hurlick. Those in favor, that's carried. Thank you very much, Josh. And we're going to move on to economic development. We can just. Bring up Maggie. Our first is the PC Connect.
Good morning.
Hi Maggie.
Hi there. Amazing, thanks so much. Um so through the warden, we did have a. A very standard month of operations for PC Connect um in November. Our ridership increased by fourteen percent compared to October, so we are certainly continuing to trend in the right direction. Um Meredith does plan to share a bit more details on some of our PC Connect successes in her report that follows. Um so for the interest of council's time, I will leave um. The PC Connect update report before um council this morning and welcome any questions that council may have.
Okay, thanks Maggie. Do we have any questions for Maggie with regard to the PC Connect report? Let's see any hands go up. Uh just before you leave me or leave us. Uh there was going to be last council meeting, we discussed the meeting with VRL. And there was some tentative dates set up and one of them was last night at four o'clock and unfortunately I couldn't attend that. Because I was chairing a spruce lodge, not for profit meeting. Did that meeting taste, take place, Maggie?
Yes, so through the warden, um it did take place. I can provide a um a brief update on that if you would like right now.
Please.
Awesome. Yeah, so we were able to meet uh with VRL yesterday to express our concerns regarding. Uh the recent, the recent schedule changes and really the lack of communication that went on about those changes. Um so VIA did advise that their changes really uh were a result of. An increase in freight train activity, which is of course uh great for our economy, however, not so great for passenger trains that operate. On freight train infrastructure. Um so they did advise that since making the schedule change, uh their on-time performance has increased drastically. Um going from five percent to seventy-five percent. Uh which really created a better uh customer experience for the riders. Uh but nonetheless, uh VIA did acknowledge our concerns regarding the timing change. Um and they have agreed to uh take these into consideration and um also better communicate these service changes with us in the future. Uh and really work together to coexist um and better align our services. So in terms of next steps, uh we do plan to sit down with both VIA and go around the same table. Uh to really better develop our partnership and intentionally align our services to better complement each other. Um and we also have agreed to advocate on behalf of VIA uh to CN. Um to express the importance of passenger rail to our community.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for Maggie on that? Councillor McKenzie.
Uh I I do want to uh thank Maggie for uh for meeting with and looking into uh. Into the issue with VRL and tying the gold trains in as well. The other comment I wanted to make is with regards to the numbers on the uh, on the transportation. In Perth County and obviously it's been a fairly good hit in West Perth. If you look at the numbers, uh I think we have the highest usage. Out of the West Perth area, so it's seems to have been a hit in our area anyways, so, which is great to see.
Other comments or questions? Don't say any, well, thank you very much for attending that meeting there yesterday, Maggie. In my, as my replacement, I just haven't mastered two meetings at once yet. Anyway, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the PC Connect November report. Moved by councillor Casenberg, seconded by councillor Deputy Ward Nagus. Those in favor, that's carried. Okay, thanks Maggie. And then we're gonna move on to, and you can stay too if you want, because we got Meredith coming up now, so. And we have Meredith on the screen smiling, so let's, we'll take it away, Meredith.
Good morning, Warden and County Council. I'll uh, I'll make this quite quick. This report is a high-level snapshot of the activities carried out by economic development and tourism. Over the past twelve months. We advertised in twelve national publications. We developed a commercial that was aired during prime time news on CTV Kitchener. And CTV London. We distributed fifty thousand tourism brochures, expanded the Farm Gate Discover More Flavor program and distributed thirty-five thousand copies of that. Farm Gate map. We hosted three media writers. And then we hosted sixteen media influencers from the Travel Media Association of Canada, highlighting champion tourism destinations. And the new Discover More experiential tourism experiences. We hosted a tastings on the trail event at three Perth County trail openings. On the Gau- the Guelph, the Gaudridge to Guelph rail trail. We developed experiential tourism program with eight signature experiences and trained over twenty-nine businesses. We led the development of the Perth County Diversity Equity and Anti-Racism Charter, Charter. We hosted a housing forum with seventy-eight attendees. We completed a triage. Business retention and expansion survey with a hundred and sixty businesses. We delivered a hundred reopening kits. We launched the Perth County Digital Service Squad, providing digital support. To a hundred and fifty-plus businesses and supported twenty, twenty-four businesses and accessing thirty-two thousand dollars, oh, just over thirty-two thousand dollars. We offered and continue to offer intercultural competency training for our businesses and our member municipalities. We hosted a virtual mentor meetup with five local mentors. We distributed four hundred co-op kits to lo- to local school boards, highlighting potential co-op locations along the PC Connect route. We developed four recruitment videos, provided over three thousand seven hundred and forty-seven rides on the PC Connect. We distributed ten thousand PC Connect route maps across the county, successfully secured two-year, a two-year project's extension. Wrote thirteen funding applications, attended numerous business association meetings and economic development advisory committees. We just wanted to highlight, as we closed twenty twenty-one, we wanted to take a moment to highlight these activities and celebrate how resilient our. Are resilient our businesses have been. If it wasn't for Perth County Council's continued support for businesses across the county. We would not have received a ninety-five percent satisfaction rate of owning and operating a business within the county. I'd originally planned to share um and officially launching our Discover More Resilience video, highlighting four local businesses that adapted their operations during the first lockdown. And continue to app, adapt to the ever-changing environment and how support from the community played an important role in their success over the past twenty months. We're a little rushed for time today, so Tyler is going to send you guys the link later on this afternoon and include it in the minutes. And it will be live on our YouTube account um this afternoon. So and I'm happy uh to take any questions, should you have any.
Thanks, Meredith. Uh any questions or comments from council with regards to our economic development report? Apparently, everybody must be happy. I don't see any hands going up. I see a couple thumbs going up. Anyway, it's certainly been a busy year for the department, not gonna lie, and they've done a great job. So I have a motion here that Perth County Council receives the Economic Development and Tourism Project Update Report. For information, moved by councillor Wilhelm, second by councillor McKenzie. Those in favor? That would be carried. Thank you very much, Meredith and Maggie.
Thank you.
And we're gonna move on to corporate services, and actually, I think before we do that, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Because I'm thinking we're about halfway through, so. We'll be back in five minutes. Doug, is your speaker working better now? I had a tough, tough time, it's kind of like how Daryl's was when you were talking, cutting in and out.
Yeah, can you hear me all right, Doug?
Yeah, you're fine now.
Okay, good, yeah, it's, it seems to be back, I had to unplug it, and the first couple times in meeting, it, it was not uh coming back, but. This break has given me an opportunity to sort of try to plug and unplug and seems like it's okay now, I can hear people anyway, so.
I needed a new computer, mine was fully charged at nine o'clock, and it recorded after ten, and I had to go get my charger already.
Yeah.
But I know the town's got three or four new computers that they're gonna start giving out, but my, my keyboard hasn't worked for two years.
Battery life.
It only worked a year.
Battery life is not great, uh.
Okay, we're back live here, folks, we're gonna carry on the meeting, and then we're moving on to corporate services. And the first thing on this here is board and committee appointments. And just before we start that process, I'm gonna point out one little thing. Some of these boards to sit on, and I know we had a vaccination policy thing earlier on. You will need to be double vaccinated to sit on some of these boards, and the one I'm particularly referring to is Spruce Lodge. And I kind of think some of the other ones are the same way. Uh. Museum, do they meet in person?
Uh yeah, we meet in person.
Okay, so you have to show proof of vaccination?
Yes.
Okay, uh and I'm not sure about some of the other boards, but it's Bruce Lodge is a definite. So anyway, just to take that into consideration. Before we start doing it, and Tyler, you're taking that away?
Absolutely, so through the warden, that's council, for council is the report on the twenty twenty-two committees and boards appointments. What I'm gonna uh do is ask the clerk Sean McCoy to post the uh list of all the committees and the members, I did send out. Uh earlier on, some uh a request for council to provide which boards and committees you'd like to sit on. Uh and this is the information I compiled, so as it currently stands, we do have uh two individuals with their names for Stratford Perth Museum and. Uh ordered through you, if, if you want to go through each uh committee, we can do that, there is three vacant spots that do need to be filled as well, but if you'd like to go through each board.
Okay, we're gonna go through this quick then, uh Spruce Lodge, so there's myself. And deputy warden Nagets, and I don't see other names, so we need two. And that'll work fine, because I chair one division and Ron, it chairs one division, so that won't cause any disruption. Uh Stratford Perth Museum, we have councillor Hurlick and councillor Callum. So we do have, that's a one-position spot, right?
Correct.
Okay. So councillor Hurlick, you get your hand up, yep?
Yeah, no, that's okay, we'll give her to, to councillor Callum there. Now pop off that one. I was, I was interested, but.
You're withdrawing, so councillor Callum, you're still accepting?
Yes, thanks, thanks Daryl, appreciate that.
Hey, Ben for.
Uh no offense, uh deputy warden Nagets, I just assumed that you were accepting. Uh municipal shared services, so there's myself. Deputy Warden Nagets and councillor Wilhelm, and we need three. Uh and you're all, Bob, you're still good, and deputy warden Nagets, you're still good?
Yes.
Okay, so that got that one covered. Okay, Perth County Land Division Committee. I have uh. Myself, deputy warden Nagets, councillor McKenzie. Councillor Wilhelm and councillor Hurlick. So I know we need five, and have we got? We got one little glitch up there. I'm not sure if it's in the bylaws or not, but we usually have one from each municipality. So I don't see a name from North Perth.
It would be interesting in sitting on land division still, I apologize, I never got my email sent back.
Okay, so we're adding councillor Matt Duncan to that, and. We should really have one from each municipality. Councillor Wilhelm.
Um I'll go, I'll withdraw my name, so we have one from each municipality, you're gonna be on for represent Perth South.
Well, I'm Perth South, and deputy warden Nagets is Perth East. Councillor McKenzie is West Perth. And councillor Duncan will be North Perth. And councillor Hurlick is on there, he is East Perth, but that's fine, because if you're gonna withdraw your name. So. As it sits, we got myself, deputy warden Nagets, councillor McKenzie, Duncan, and councillor Hurlick, you guys are all good with that? Yep, and you're good with that, Matt? Okay, thanks, okay, that was looked after, accessibility councillor Casenberg. That's a one-person spot, right? Uh councillor Casenberg, you're good with that? Okay, moving on, thank you. Perth County Agriculture Working Group, which we just referred to there a little bit ago. So there's myself, councillor McDermott, councillor Ait. Councillor Callum. And councillor Wilhelm. Is there a, we have. So it's just from each municipality?
Yeah, great, so through the warden, the committee consists of the warden of the county, the mayor, and the deputy mayors of Perth East, West and North. So Perth South, and then the deputy mayors for East, West and North.
Okay, so basically, we're good with that. Committee as it sits there right now?
Correct.
Okay, and you're all still interested, no spots? Yep, yep, Doug, you're good? Yep, he's shaking his head. Okay, then that one's done. So we have attainable and affordable housing. And on there is myself, councillor Casenberg. And deputy warden Nagets. I'm thinking we're missing a couple, we're missing two. Councillor Wilhelm.
I put my name on there.
Okay, so we're gonna add councillor Wilhelm to that. And councillor Ait, are you gonna put your name on?
Yeah, I am, yep.
Okay, so there's councillor Ait, so does that, that fill those requirements? Okay, so unless someone else wants one of those spots. That one's looked after. Okay, next we have Community Transportation Steering Committee. Which really, to this point, should have a whole lot of non-involvement. But it's still there, so there's myself, councillor McKenzie, deputy warden Nagets, councillor Casenberg. And councillor Wilhelm, which basically says we got all the mayors and the warden. So that one's looked after. Planning Services Review Committee. Same thing. Uh you're in Perth Public Health, we have councillor Casenberg. And we need one more. Councillor Wilhelm.
Uh I, I go back on if uh no one else is interested.
Is there anyone interested other than councillor Wilhelm for that second spot on the health unit? I'm not hearing any names. Sounds like we have councillor Casenberg and we have councillor Wilhelm. And that's looked after. And that pretty well covers it, right?
Correct, so through the warden, what we're gonna do for uh in the bylaw section, we will have this bylaw posted. Um during the rest of the presentations today and reports, Sean will be filling out the bylaw to have those names added into the bylaw, so when we approve it, the names will be in there. During the rest of the presentations today and reports, Sean will be filling out the bylaw to have those names added into the bylaw, so when we approve it, the names will be in there.
Okay, so I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the 2022 Board and Committee Appointments Report. And Perth County Council approves the Board and Committee Appointments for 2022. Moved by Councillor Hurlick, seconded by Councillor Casenberg. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to Forestry Inspector's Report. Tyler or Sean?
I'll let me take that one. So through the order in front of council is the October 2021 Forestry Inspector's Report. Prepared by Marvin Smith, Perth County Forest Street Inspector. Marvin completed three inspections, two as a response of submission of a NOI or notice of intent. And one is a response of a third party notification. For council's knowledge, we are over 140 NOI submitted this year. Which is a relative increase over last year where I believe we had around 120. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them and pass them on to Marvin.
Okay, questions with regards to Councillor Hurlick?
No, I actually just a constituent of Perth East of Ellis Ward. I was investigated a bush line, a potential laneway expansion around a bush and really enjoyed working with Marvin and was very knowledgeable. So it's just something, you know, I've heard a few people now comment to me, they really enjoy working with Marvin. He's not power hungry, but yet he knows his stuff. So they're quite happy with him. Just put that in there.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the October 2021 Forestry Inspector's Report, Report for Information. Moved by Councillor Hurlick, seconded by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Moving on again. Legal and Corporate Services, Annette.
Good morning, everybody. Just a few highlights with respect to the monthly activity report. On November 17th, Perth County celebrated GIS Day with the launch of newly updated aerial photography. This is known as Swoop imagery, which are high resolution digital photos. They get every five years, they can be geo-referenced and they're layered as base maps for the county of Perth. Legislative Services supported the 73rd Annual Perth Municipal Association Event, which took place on November 17th. There were 84 participants, so congratulations to those who assisted and to North Perth, who hosted the event. It was an excellent program. And additionally, Legislative Services have circulated the 2022 meeting schedules for County Council and for most committees. In terms of updates, for court services, Regional Senior Justice of the Peace approved in-person court appearances for the West Region for some matters. That being said, we're keeping a very close eye out for any updates, any further updates, given the recent increasing numbers of COVID cases. IT has introduced cyber awareness training for all staff to better protect the corporation as a whole. Finance continues to work with impact to answer the outstanding questions and also continues to work on the 2022 budget. Legislative Services submitted the accessibility compliance report, which is to be submitted every two years. And they're working on the rollout of the records management program, which council approved on November 18th. In terms of cost avoidances, Archives has added some additional checking of the panels of the HVAC units. There were two situations in November where the sensors failed and failed to alert staff. So Facilities has worked with the maintenance company to address the problem, but for added quality assurance, Archives stepped in, some additional checking to make sure that this problem is caught, should it happen again, but it should not. Looking forward, at the time of writing this report, there were two events scheduled, which have since taken place. The first was accessibility training, which took place yesterday and kudos to Sean for an excellent job. Leading accessibility training for the lower tiers as well as county staff. And the second was the forestry conservation program, which was an information session, which again was another excellent session and we received positive feedback on. So I'll report on both of those programs more in next month's update. Going into the new year, GIS will be scheduling more Ask Me Anything web GIS training sessions. And Legislative Services is compiling the information received for the annual accessibility report. Which will be circulated to the lower tiers and then to council for their approval. January 13th, you should be, we will be doing the budget overview with our treasurer and the capital budget will follow after that. Are there any questions?
Questions for Annette, we have Councillor McDermott.
Hi, Annette. Just that Swoop imagery, has that stuff ever been tested in court? Like if it's used in a court case, has it ever been tested that it can be used? If you ever heard of that?
I haven't heard of that, but I can't see any reason why it would not be or could not be used in court. I would certainly see it being submitted as an exhibit if there is a case with with respect to boundaries or I don't know, a challenge to land use. I don't see a reason off the top of my head why it wouldn't be admissible in a court proceeding.
Okay, no, just somebody had brought that up.
Other questions or comments for Annette? Don't see any. I have a motion, Perth County Council receives the Legal Corporate Services November Update Report. Moved by Councillor Callum, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm. Those in favor? That's carried. Moving on. Corporate Services recorded videos of council meetings, Annette.
All right, so back to me again. I think all of you will recall, when I first started with the county and I did my introduction. There was a cat that repeatedly interrupted me. And unfortunately, that reporting now lives on in perpetuity. And if anybody wanted to use that to embarrass me, they certainly could. Not one of my finer moments, pushing a cat out of my way and having to present with the tail in my face. Our current process with respect to recorded videos, recordings of council meeting, is that it's governed by our records retention by law and by Tomrants. And you'll recall that Tomrants is a classification system, which is applied to our records. So our recordings of these council meetings are kept online for two years. They're posted on YouTube. They're considered to be copies of the council meetings. After the two years, they're then stored offline, so they're removed, but they are kept permanently as a copy of the meeting. The official record of a meeting are the minutes. It's always the minutes, which are the official records of council meetings. And there's differences between the minutes and the recordings. So the recordings, they provide a verbatim reproduction of the meeting. Capturing who said what in its most accurate form. The minutes provide a summary. Statements are not attributable to specific councillors or positions are not listed. And there's also an opportunity to review and later approve the minutes. So some concerns have arisen with regards to the potential risk of putting the recordings online and leaving those videos online. Specifically, the videos could be downloaded and they could be manipulated. So let's take my cat instance. Somebody could create a reel of embarrassing moments and replay that back. Targeted to me specifically to embarrass me. It's not one of my finer moments and I would not be happy with that. Additionally, the videos could be used at a later date, potentially against the corporation or a councillor. To give you an example, it could be that you said something or you took a position on a specific issue, which may not have been favorable. Or you may change your position at a later date and someone could come back and say, you said X, Y and Z at this particular meeting and now you're changing your mind. Why? That being said, with respect to those particular risks, the videos also serve to protect the corporation. As they're an accurate representation of what was said at council. So if a video is later manipulated or quotation is taken out of context, the recording serves to protect the councillor and to protect council. Again, to give you a specific example, you may recall at a previous meeting, the warden made a comment referencing a colloquial term for a flower. That could have been taken out of context. However, the recorded video allows us to go back and see specifically what was said. And what the intent was to know that, again, the warden was referencing a flower. There is a concern that the longer the videos remain online, that there's a higher risk that someone could download them. Or they could be manipulated or statements could be used against council or councillors. However, that risk really arises as soon as the recording is created. The public is entitled to the recording. They can request it at any point in time. The video becomes a record. And it's a, it's a public record. It's subject to an MPFA request or could just be granted by right as a result of it being a public record. There may be a benefit to having people request the video in that it may serve as advance notice that somebody's requesting it for a reason. We don't know the specific reason, but we would know that somebody's requesting it. In terms of an environmental scan. It appears that many of the municipalities do not have policies specifically to recording council meetings or posting or for how long they should be posted for. Some have taken the position that the recordings are transitory records. So you'll recall that these are records which are kept solely for convenience of reference. They're short term and then they're destroyed. There are some municipalities that post recordings for 30 days. It appears there's one that posts for a year. But it does seem that the majority posts the videos indefinitely, so you can continuously go back. Looking at the recommendations of the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. They included a statement in one of their best practice guides that the recording should be managed in accordance with existing records management procedures and bylaws, which is what Perth County is doing. So that is our, you know, the videos are, exist online for two years and then they're taken down. From a legal perspective. There's no legal requirement to record meetings or to post the recording or to post meetings. But there is a legal requirement to be accountable and transparent pursuant to the requirements in the Municipal Act. I raised this issue with council because I want you to be aware that there are some risks that come with recording council meetings. But they also need to be balanced with accountability, transparency and accessibility, particularly at a time in which the public cannot attend these meetings. It's really determination of council, what you choose to do with respect to the recordings. But you do need to know that there is a statutory requirement to be accountable and transparent. Balance that with the potential risks. Be aware that as soon as the meetings are recorded, those risks do arise. The videos can always be accessed at any time by the public, either through a request or as a public record. And you do have the requirement to be open and transparent on the other hand. So without an open to any questions, this is just knowledge that I'm putting forward to you and it's in your hands to do that balancing act.
Okay, thanks, Annette. Questions for Annette with regards to this report, Councillor Hurlick?
Oh, very good report. Cleaned up a lot there. Talked about a lot of accessibility for the public right now is basically mail other than video. Me, myself, experience with people using video. Like it just, it worries me, the idea that it wouldn't be available, whether it be law or the public. I have no problem with a cap, you know, if it helps for keeping organizing, you know, a couple of years. Whenever we decide there, but for sure, it's, it's, it's just, it's awesome written about these videos for available. And I just wanted to make that comment. It's, it's so handy for the masses. We all have that risk of making a mistake or me myself, it's, it's a different prayer that I hold a little. I like to feel it keeps me in mind. But no, a couple of years for sure online and then archive them after. That would be a good idea. Thanks.
Other comments or questions, Councillor Casenberg?
I too think that, that making these videos available online as archived videos is essential to our transparency and accountability obligations, but like Councillor Hurlick and as Annette mentioned. I understand that they can be manipulated. I think frankly, that's a risk that any of us who enter public life engage with. And, and as long as, as the corporation is maintaining what it considers the true record. That is taken not from the YouTube source or maybe downloaded immediately after this meeting and stored on a county server. I think that's to our benefit because should there be some discrepancy and or some individual with ill intention who manipulates a video. Then we have the true copy that we can roll out on demand. That said, I think in terms of making availability on the web, on YouTube or other web video purveyor. I would prefer to see that our policy is that all the videos for the current term of council remain up and available. And when the term is finished, that may be in fact the point where we take them down. Maybe there's a one-year allowance for the last term at the term turnover or something like that. But I think there's wisdom in at least making available in the public domain, the current terms videos of council. And as I said, I encourage, and I'm sure it's already been done. I encourage us taking an archived copy that is sort of a, you know, a truer copy that is, has not been manipulated or infiltrated by hackers or any other who has nefarious intentions.
Okay, Councillor Ait?
My question would be, when and if we become normal again, which will never happen for me. Would we videotape or would we go back? Because for 175 years, there's been no video record of it when everybody was in council. So we go back, say the end of, or say the next term of council, 20, December of 2022. And we're in council then, we're back in the courthouse or wherever we choose. Are we going to make it our policy to videotape everything and put it online? Are we going to go back to the old normal or what would be the new normal then? We'll have to look at that maybe at that time.
That is potential, but my, I'm not going to speak on behalf of staff, but I guess is that you're still going to videotape and put them online for a period of time. Councillor Eggers? Deputy Warden Eggers, I mean.
Sorry, I couldn't get my unmuted. Yeah, they're important to have, but I feel that two years is way too long to keep these on the computer and for several reasons. And one of the reasons is, according to Robert's Rule of Order, newly revised, the minutes should contain mainly a record of what was done at the meeting, not what was said by the members. So to me, the tapes are the same as staff taking notes as we're doing our meeting. But the motion, what we decide at the end is the official word, but not all the public understands that. That it's a motion that's, that we're going by, not what the public are saying, but staff does, I'm not sure if they keep their, their minutes or their notes that they take or do they destroy them? And if they destroy them, then tapes should be the same thing because the tapes are just an enactment of what went on. Also YouTube, I'm pretty sure we signed an agreement with YouTube, the municipality, and they take all the rights. We have no rights now to those videos. They have all the rights of what they can do with them. Because we have researched this in Perth East as well. And I know Annette said what all the municipalities are doing, but Perth East is in the process of bringing the policy back. And we haven't got that back at council yet of how long we're going to keep our, our videos, but I think these recordings you can keep them, but not two years. I think that's, as I said, that is way too long. There is a huge liability risk with keeping them around. So I would like to see that we leave them up for six months and then after six months, they are archived, we keep them. If people want them, they can access them through MPFA. They can still get them. But they're just not up in the, up on the computer all the time for access to everybody.
Other comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. Correct me if I'm wrong, Annette. Our policy at this moment says two years?
Yes, it's in accordance with our record retention by law.
And that's our retention record by law. So I have a motion in front of me that Perth County Council receives the corporate records recorded videos of council meetings report. And we're going to deal with that first. So if I can have a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Casenberg. Those in favor? Okay, so I heard a couple little different interests on the screen there. If someone wants to change the current record of two years, which is Interest uh on the screen there. If someone wants to change the current record of two years, which is our retention policy by law. Then you can make your motion now. Otherwise, it's going to stay at two years. Councillor Aggots?
I would move that we only keep our YouTube videos on the computer for six months.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Councillor Wright? Open for discussion. Councillor Kasenberg?
Uh, can I just clarify? Um, uh, deputy warden Aggots, is your intent, you said on the computer, but do you mean on YouTube, on the internet? Is that your intention?
Yeah, they only stay on YouTube for six months and then they're still accessible after that through MPFA. Archived with the with the municipality.
Okay, so we are, we are maintaining a a recording in our own servers and our own. Sort of IT cluster kind of thing. And uh, do we maintain that indefinitely or is that subject to the two year um uh record retention suggestion here? Anyone have comment on that?
We retain it indefinitely.
We retain indefinitely.
Okay.
Okay, the motion on the floor. Okay, I got another call. Hand up. Councillor Hurlick?
No, no, I, I I'll, I kind of like that idea there, councillor Kasenberg, the term and then your period over. Um, I just made that comment. That's that's my thoughts. Like, that's unique. I like it. Thank you.
Other comments or questions before I call the vote? Don't see any hands up. So the motion was six months on YouTube for public. And then kept permanently. Those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. That is defeated. If I can count correctly. Okey dokey, so we're going to move on. Okay. Uh, next we're gonna move into public works. Oh, councillor Wilhelm?
Do we have to uh make a motion to retain them for two years or?
No, that's already, that's already in our bylaw, retention bylaw.
So we're just keeping it.
Okay, surplus property, public works, St. Andrew's Street, and that was written by Laurie and John McClellan. And I'm not sure whether Laurie or John, we have to get John up. Showing up in the bottom corner. Morning, John.
Good morning, Warden Heskey, and good morning, council. Um, just like to first acknowledge and I certainly appreciate the assistance of the CEO and preparing this report. Uh, at our last council meeting, we took steps to move forward. With renovating five here on the street for the purposes of housing the county's administrative offices. By taking these steps, it leads to this report to the to declare the building at twenty four St. Andrew's Street surplus to the needs of the county. And direct staff to proceed in one of two directions. Twenty four St. Andrew's Street was built in nineteen ten for the purposes of the land registry office. And later on to house the county's archive services. The building has sat vacant since twenty fifteen, has asbestos asbestos and mold issues. And continues to deteriorate rapidly. Staff engaged the services of any engineering to provide guidance on the process of demolition. Or to sever the building off the property in order to put it up for sale. The report outlines the steps, costs and general timelines to undertake either demolition. Or severance of twenty four St. Andrew's Street. And certainly acknowledges the complications and issues associated with both options. Should the severance option option be pursued, we have included the county's sale and disposition of land policy as an attachment to the report. Some of the conditions and information pertaining to the appraisal are also provided. If council has any questions or comments, the CEO, CAO or myself can address those.
Okay, thanks, John. Uh, you haven't got anything to add, Laurie?
No, I think.
Well, covers the basics.
Yes, through the warden, it's it's um thorough. I think it's in in line with um. Uh, the the responsibility of council to make sure that we're stewards of our assets. And uh, this particular building is surplus to our needs. It's in extremely poor condition. And so we're bringing that forward to you so we can um either dispose of it or that we demolish it.
Okay, you know, open the floor for questions or comments, councillor Hurlick?
No, great report. Um, there there, there's nobody more in this uh, in this council as a soft spot for classical. Architectural buildings, as I've said. I'm the first one to call a spade a spade and I don't know, at this point. I think the laws just seem to recommend demolish and, you know, recycle the bricks, stuff like that. There uh, there's people taking these down and they're very, very conservative with how people about it. And I believe there's some good good bricks in that building that could be used again and potentially some other work. And at the end of the day, what kind of room would that give us? What could we do with that area? You know, um, we would make it a green space, sitting area, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just wondering if there's been a lot of talking. And no, we've seen little skits along the way, but nothing too major. But no, I I think the right thing to do is maybe just remove of it.
Okay, councillor Wilhelm?
Unfortunately, I agree with councillor Hurlick on this matter that uh, I think that would be. Best served to be demolished and I would like to see us keep the property. For uh possible future use uh down the road. We can always uh down the road if we feel necessary. We can always sever the property after and sell it if if we'd like, but uh. I do believe that unfortunately, um, our option are is to do the smaller demolish this building.
Other comments, councillor McKenzie?
Well, I would, I would agree with the previous two um. Comments. Yeah, I I don't think we've got a lot of options for the building itself. Um, but I I I agree with what councillor Wilhelm said. I think at this particular time. Uh, we should probably hang on to that property and and just see down the road whether we have a use for it or not. I think you can always, as he's, as Bob has said, we can always sever it at a future date, but I think uh. Deal with the building. It's in bad shape. Deal with that, but hold, keep the land there for now.
Okay, other comments from councillors or questions? Councillor Kasenberg?
I I generally agree with the 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 thread of my colleagues as well. Um, just a quick question for John. Councillor Hurlick raised an important consideration here and that is sort of responsible. A demolition that perhaps can make some of the materials available uh for others. Um, is that incorporated into the plan and and the budget that has been roughly proposed in this report?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure if any engineering took sort of uh those types of ideas into. The the associated costs, but I think that would be an excellent idea and we can, I can run that by them there. Uh, see if there's any additional costs in trying to sort of uh save save some of the components of that building.
Councillor McKenzie?
Just just further uh. To my previous comments and and similar maybe to what Todd is thinking. Wondering if there is any possibility that we could use some of the materials with the brick and I'm thinking in the addition that we're going to do at the courthouse. Incorporate that in maybe as a wall uh that uh, you know, this wall came from from the former. Well, if you go back far enough, it was Health Unit or Archives or or Registry Office and incorporate a little bit of the past into the future.
That's always a potential. And we'll look into it. We can look into this. At this point in time, we just have to make a decision one way or the other, and then you can deal with the details after the fact. So I'm going to read a motion here. And you correct me if I'm wrong unless somebody else has questions or comments. Not seen any hands. I got a motion here that says Perth County Council received. The surplus property slash twenty four St. Andrew's Street Stratford report. And that council declare twenty four St. Andrew's Streets Stratford surplus to the needs of the municipality. And I'm not sure we necessarily need that, but I guess we're dealing with the building. And that council directs staff to. Take the necessary steps to demolish twenty four St. Andrew's Street. So I would need a mover and a seconder. Moved by councillor Wilhelm, seconded by councillor Hurlick. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor? Carried. Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, and this is John again. And that is to do with the climate change coordinator extension report.
Thank you, Warden Heskey. Uh, this report is to inform council that the seven area municipalities are budgeting to share the costs. To extend the climate change coordinator contract until December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Back in February this year, council approved the extension of the coordinator for the remainder of twenty twenty one. With the potential for the additional extension in twenty twenty two. The consensus of the steering committee is to continue with the partnership agreement. And share the cost of the climate change coordinator for twenty twenty two. Some of the municipalities have already been discussing budget and have indicated no initial issues moving forward with this extension. Since we won't be discussing budget until late January or early February. Wanted to give council a heads up that we have included fourteen thousand dollars in a contract line item. In the facilities administration budget, which represents one seventh of the costs. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for John on this report. Okay, I see councillor McDermott's hand.
Uh, yeah, John, uh, we keep extending this. What is there? Are we ever going to put an end date on this? Because I don't want to keep extending it forever and ever.
Uh, through the warden. Um, you you know, a final deadline has not been discussed of yet. It was just for the extension of twenty twenty two. And I think council will certainly have a work plan in front of them as we discuss budget. And uh, you know, I think that'll depend how we move forward in twenty twenty two will dictate where we go later on. I think in in the report, I've kind of indicated each municipality. May sort of have different targets, goals, budgets associated with climate change. I I believe we all have them, all have the uh reference. To taking action on climate change within our strategic plans. Um, you you know, and I acknowledge that we do have, we may have different ideas moving forward. Uh, but for the time being, you know, we share a lot of common goals in this and and a lot of common ideas. And so for twenty twenty two, at least it's worthwhile in in extending this partnership.
Councillor Hurlick?
It's no secret. I may not have many concerns about the instance, of course, real pollution and real benefits. Everybody is always. Beneficial as well. And yeah, John touched on it, of course, we even all are engaging in practices and. A bunch of this archive, energy uses, carbon, I know we have all our buildings and facilities. Since back in two thousand fourteen, I believe. Um, that being said, you know, um, there there's engagement. The public is aware of our community, grain farmers. And that, you know, we're going to all strive more to continually be engaged. It's. Yeah, I I always worry about policies. You'll hear me say that. Policies and overlapping policies, what conservation orders you're doing already. So you know, the source water protection, for example, is our one. Well, now we need to water protection. You know, these are things that are overlapping in my mind. That being said, um, we are kind of, I think it's kind of taught us and it's frustrating. I don't know. Another year maybe and and more engagement, continuous engagement and, you know. There's lots of concerns coming up, but we'll all know that and we all have our our thoughts on what healthy, healthy. Is we'll look forward around climate and. So, you know, we'll we'll play it out. Thank you.
Councillor Rob?
Uh, for the councillor McDermott's comments, I think that uh. Climate change is is an issue. Uh, we have to be part of the solution and I think that down the road. It won't be fourteen thousand dollars. I think it'll be a lot more that the municipalities are going to have to contribute. To uh try and curb this. Climate change and and get carbon under control, so um. It may not be as a climate coordinator. But uh, to my opinion, there is going to be quite an expense down the road. Continue.
Deputy Warden Aggots?
I've brought this up before, but I'd like to say it again. As we move forward. I'd like us to see how we're going to develop all this, if we're going to stay as a group of seven. Or we're going to break off the rural and the urban or how we're going to do it, because this is a huge. One person to do for seven different municipalities. Yes, we have some similarities, but we also have a lot of things that are different. And each municipality is going to decide how they're going to move forward as we go forward. So I think we need to have the steering group have a look at how we are going to move forward. Are we going to move forward as a group or we're going to break off in twos or threes or. The rural and the urban or just how we're going to do it, but I'd like to see that come back to us too. Before this year is over so that we're not here in the same spot next year and wondering where we're going to go forward with this.
Other comments or questions? I'm not seeing. There's one quick comment. John, you're on that committee, correct? Correct. So in part of your discussion with the steering committee, you were talking about a work plan and. Reporting to the seven councils of the partnering municipalities, et cetera, et cetera. Could I ask that there be more collaboration with outside groups? And discussions as part of that work plan?
Uh, I will certainly bring that forward at our next meeting.
I just think that would be prudent to do that. To get everybody, as many people involved as possible. Okay, I have a motion here and this motion only reads Perth County Council receive. A climate change coordinator two thousand and twenty two extension report. Moved by councillor Wilhelm, seconded by councillor Duncan. Those in favor? That is carried. Now, we don't have to deal with the actual extension. Do we, right at this point in time? This is just an extension report. John?
Sorry, this is just an informational report to Warden.
I think so.
Just to give you guys a heads up that it is included in the budget.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so we're moving on. And we're moving on to tender results. And Bill Wilson wrote the reports. Bill coming on, then Mary's right there. Morning, Bill.
Morning, Warden Heskey and council.
We're ready for your report.
Okay, thank you. Um, the first report here um. On your agenda is with regards to the tender results. For uh cabin chassis units. Um, we had. Received pre-budget approval to go to tender um to replace one county triaxial unit. Um, and it was a cooperative tender that we had issued and included. Um, units for West Perth and also Perth East. The tender was issued um through our our standard process here um on. Through the website on our E-bids and that did not um. Result in any qualifying bids being submitted or um really any bids for that matter. So. As a response to that, we are looking for um council's approval to. Authorize a director to do a direct negotiation or sole source procurement um for this purchase on behalf of the county. Um, that is supported through the purchasing policy of the corporation here. Um, a a couple of the conditions that support that policy are um included in the report. But mainly it is in response to not receiving any bids um for that public tender. So with that, um. We have had conversation with vendors um in the market space. And although it is um not very desirable condition. And although it is not very desirable conditions right now, we are aware that there is still some units available in the latter quarters of two thousand twenty-two, being Q-three and Q-four. And we are looking for approval to work with these vendors and come up with a price and and try to get our replacement in queue and likely wouldn't be seeing delivery of that unit until two thousand twenty-three, if we were able to work something out. But we would like to at least have the approval to go down this path. We do have a budgeted amount for that, which is right around the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So as mentioned in the report here, what we're looking to do is, is work with that budgeted amount, and if we can work within that, we would execute the purchase agreement. If the quoted amount exceeds that, that amount of the hundred and seventy thousand, the report indicates that we would report back to council with that, with that price and have the decision made at that time whether to proceed or not. And then also, the second point of this, this report is with regards to kind of our purchasing methods for fleet replacements, particularly heavy trucks in general. Just kind of while we were working through this, this purchase and this tender, there are some other municipalities and some pure municipalities out there that's, that we have talked to, that have undertaken a different approach. Rather than tendering each unit each year, they have worked out some purchasing agreements with vendors that have supply available for them for an extended period of time, whether it's, it's two to four years type thing. And through conversations with them, they are not necessarily finding themselves in in a difficult position where their trucks have already more or less been pre-ordered, and they have been in queue for production well in advance. So they are not sitting in a position where they're still trying to complete orders to fill, fulfill their replacement schedules on an annual basis. So John and I are both available if you have any questions on this report.
Okay, questions for Bill or John for this? Councilor Wilhelm?
I think that our current tender process may as well be thrown out the window, the way things are. To me, what I see in, in the truck industry is that if you want a vehicle, you best put your name on a slot. And when it comes, you say thank you. And I think what you need to do is increase your hundred and seventy thousand by probably thirty percent. And if you want a truck for twenty-three, you probably should do the same thing. My opinion would be to find a supplier that will build a vehicle to your specifications that will commit to probably fourth quarter of twenty-two. And if you need anything sooner, it's probably not gonna happen. However, for twenty-three, if you want something earlier, I would probably commit to a slot at that time, too. And right now, if you need something, you're gonna have to pay. There is no bargaining on this, and that's just what I see. For example, I was supposed to get a couple of trucks in December. I'm telling them, I'm being told that I will see them maybe in the first quarter. I will see the price ninety days before the production. And the same thing with trailers. They won't even quote on pricing. So I think right now it's a case of put your name on a slot, and hopefully it gets built at that time.
Council McDermott?
I would, I would agree with Councilor Wilhelm, but the way we, the way the world is right now, they might as well commit, get somebody that they can work with and and commit to the future buying, because I don't see this changing anytime soon. And I agree with them on the price. You're gonna be told what you're gonna pay, and you either pay it or you pass on it.
Anyone else with comments? You guys have any response to those comments, Bill or John?
Um, no, I would, I would agree with that. We have seen some prices that for these, these, these purchases from other municipalities that were, that were kind of booked earlier on in the year, and yeah, you're right. It may be challenging for us to meet that hundred and seventy thousand mark. But I don't necessarily want to rule that out right away here, and as far as our future replacements, twenty twenty-four would be the next, the next year that we would be looking for a plow truck replacement, so that would. We have a bit of time there, so I don't know if there will be a market correction during that time or not, but it's, it's something that John and I definitely want to, to look at here and, and just pursue a little bit further and, and see how these other municipalities have been coping with this as well. And I think there is opportunity for us to, to improve the way that we tender for these units.
Mr. Councilor Casenberg?
What I'm hearing, and I, you know, bow to Council Wilhelm's professional expertise. What I'm hearing is that some flexibility needs to be granted at this point to the procurement group with regards to even price a point. And, you know, we've heard Council Wilhelm suggest that you could expect a thirty percent bounce here. I don't know that our resolution actually does anything to tie your hands on that, Mr. Wilson, but I certainly would be willing, if, if we need to do so, to give you a little bit more leeway with regards to your negotiating power, or even just getting on a bloody list, right? So I, you know, if, if, if things aren't in policy, it's gonna support you to get us on a list and move this forward, then if we need an extra clause in our resolution to do that, let's, let's get that in there.
Other comments or questions? Deputy Warden Naggetts?
So do you see this problem with our other equipment, too, like our, I know we're gonna lease something in the next report, but like even our small pickup trucks and, and everything that we tender, do you think that's gonna be the same way as, as the stock truck? We should be looking at that for everything, or when do we replace some of that other stuff? You said twenty twenty-four to a plow, but when do we replace the pickup trucks or some of the other equipment?
Yes. This, it's, it seems to be that our heavy equipment isn't in as bad of shape. The vendors that I've spoken to regarding some of our heavy equipment is wheel loaders, graders, that sort of thing. The supply chain issues don't appear to be as big of a concern there. They've told me there's lots of inventory across Canada to support what, what equipment we need, but to your point, yes, the, the fleet side of things as far as the, the heavy trucks and our pickup trucks. You know, the, the one that we had ordered back in spring of this year, a standard three-quarter pick, ton pickup truck. We're not expecting to see that asset delivered till Q-one of next year. So it is, there is a concern there, and it is impacting our, our lifecycle, our strategies, too, because, you know, we're buying them in one year, and they're actually not being put into service, you know, for, for over a year sometimes, so. Yeah.
Councilor Hurley?
Oh, great, great report. No, this, this is a issue in different areas of the world. There's rethinking of processors, electronic components, you know, that was always brought in. There's huge factories going up in the American sales right now. They're loading in two years, so we get that back up. And let's be honest, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing a baby boomer division, you know, they're, they're winding down. They ain't purchasing cars the way they were. And I think we're gonna see more consolidation around leaderships and everything, just how many new vehicles will be rolling over. You know, it's, it's interesting times in the vehicle market, the pickup market, yeah, it's, that's my concern. It is, it is batting us around within the county with the strategies we have in place, the role of efficiency. And we're have to be prepared to, you know, amend some budgets potentially, and it's the only way around this. Example here, you know, we're looking at huge increases in trucks, and we, we just gotta be frugal where we can, because this is inevitable. I don't see it going away. Many of the possibilities are just going through the roof. So I'd be interested to be looking at our other policies as well. This looks like it could be a concern. You know, we, we have the duty to ensure we have good equipment. We have great, and if we need to look at more, we're going to have to.
Other comments? Councilor Wright?
So being there's no financial savings or anything, Bill or John, you're just, we're just gonna cut Perth East and West Perth aside and let them go fend for themselves? Is that what we're thinking? We ordered two electric vehicle pickups. We know they're not coming until two thousand twenty-three at the earliest. But you're not gonna go out for us, as I'm gonna talk Chris West Perth and try to get us a tandem. Mike Kramer will go out on his own, because there is no savings in our group buying group anymore. It's, it's, it's done. Correct? So Mike and, and I can't think of his Wes, will just go out and try to find a slot for themselves?
Yeah, yes, for the, for the most part, we'll, we'll still, you know, when, if I'm talking to a vendor, you know, I will definitely message or mention that we have a, a peer, or, you know, we have two other trucks that will potentially be reaching out to you as well, and we'll, we'll work together that way. But when it comes down to, you know, negotiating or working out the actual purchase, we will leave West Perth with Mike and same for Perth East with Wes, yeah.
Yeah, the report does indicate you're gonna still collaborate. Okay. I've got a motion here. I think this is gonna take care of most things. Perth County Council receives the tender results two thousand twenty-one slash oh thirty-three slash eleven supply of triaxle and tandem axle cabin chassis report. And the Perth County Council authorized the Director of Public Works to procure this asset through single source and or direct negotiation as per bylaw three six three two slash two thousand and seventeen, being the county of Perth procurement policy. And the Perth County Council direct staff to report back to council with alternate purchasing options for future heavy fleet replacements. And the second part of that, they did mention in the report, it was more than one seventy that they would perhaps come back to council, but this says procure the asset through single source and or direct negotiation. So that, to me, covers a little rich. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Just through the word, does council want to add in there that they authorize a budget adjustment of up to thirty percent?
Uh, well, I think this says you can authorize to buy the vehicle, period.
Okay.
Because in all honesty, a winter maintenance truck is very important. You gotta have it, and you gotta have good equipment. You know, maybe a pickup truck, we might be able to slough off for six or eight or ten months. Cloud the roads is a different story.
So the direction is to go get it?
Direction is to go buy it, if I read that correctly. And I think I am. And that, does that sound like that to you?
Yeah. Well, the, the, sorry, the third resolution that Perth County direct staff report back to council, we believe that.
Second, authorize the Director of Public Works to procure this asset
Yes.
through single source. That means they can just go buy it.
You're safe.
Okay, so unless somebody has a problem with that, I need a mover in a second, or move by Councilor Wilhelm, second by Council McDermott. Last chance for comment. Councilor McKenzie?
And I assume this would maybe happen anyways, but it isn't dictated in the resolution. But when they order it, they would inform us as to what the final cost.
Oh, definitely, yeah. And we're the ones that cut the checks still.
That's what, yeah. It's nice to know how much we're spending.
Okay, I have a motion on the floors. Move it second. Those in favor? That's carried. Very good. So that's dealt with. Good luck in negotiations, Bill and John.
Yeah, thank you.
Move on to the wheel loader review. And Bill, I think you're doing that.
Yeah, I could walk through this one as well. Earlier on in the year, we were asked to review our fleet of wheel loaders. And this was kind of, this came out after we had our council decided that our last loader replacement, which was this year, actually, two thousand twenty-one, rather than an outright purchase, which was sort of the historical way of procuring these. It was, it was procured through a lease, and we have had a bit of time to review how that leasing agreement and how that all shook out, and so far, it's, it's gone well. So we have completed a review of, I guess, which would be our, our other loader, which is the bigger of our two assets that we run. They're both mostly used for material handling, loading winter material, salt, sand in the winter. But they also have some, some pretty significant roles for year-round maintenance, shouldering, you know, right away management, sweeping intersections, that sort of thing. So we looked at the leasing costs and the lifecycle costs that we have for our assets, our wheel loader assets, which are fifteen years. And that is somewhat in line with what we see throughout the municipal industry as far as some of our comparators and some other municipalities. That lifecycle seems to range anywhere between twelve to fifteen years. So we are finding that these loader assets, as they, as they get towards the end of their asset lifecycle, I'm gonna say anywhere from that, that seven, eight years and beyond, they are costing a fair bit amount of money to maintain and keep in an operable state, which is an impact on our operating budget. So we have found there that with the leased asset, we're, we're running around, let's say, twenty-five thousand dollars a year between the lease payments and the maintenance costs for that asset. And when we look at our John Deere, which is one that we own now, which is not leased, that one is just under thirty thousand dollars. Those costs, they, they, like I said, they rise towards the end of that asset's life, just because there are, you know, more susceptible to repairs, and sometimes in cases, larger repair bills. So there's information within this report that speaks to that, and we do have a recommendation there that we would like to include the replacement of the John Deere loader within the two thousand twenty-two budget and look at leasing that unit, but also the intent there would be to structure a tender in a way that we have leasing options as well as purchase, array purchase options. And then with that, I guess we would compare those and look at the the lifecycle of that asset and whether or not if we shorten its useful life, is a residual value of that asset going to be worth more at a certain time throughout its life where we can keep our maintenance dollars down on the operating side and then get a better return on the investment if we were able to sell it earlier on through its life. So that's kind of where we're at with this, this report. And if there's any questions, again, John and I are here.
Questions, either Bill or John? Councilor Hurley?
And no great report, Bill. In the construction. uh prior to this, um involvement with council and for eighty years. A person who buys a new piece of equipment and doesn't shut it off around the clock makes good money. Do you want to know something? The person who uses it, you know, mediocre, somewhere in between, was starting the stopping. That's when you get all the electrical calls, you get all those silly issues, it seems. Oh, and it makes sense, you know, the person who just doesn't have to avoid. The leasing option is good, I believe, and we need to look at that more frequently for the hours we put on. And no, it's 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 logical, this stuff that the service calls, I know what that costs. Well, I'm seeing sixteen thousand dollars a year, but don't surprise me, it's it's wild. So, yeah, no, I I like the idea of leasing for these loaders, we keep them nice and we work with them, you know, we still respect it. And I believe it will be a good reaction to go on forward. Thanks.
That's wrong. I'd like to see a a report back on the possibility of purchasing uh replacement for the John Deere loader with the idea of it would be uh switched out in five to seven years. And uh with a full uh warranty, if you can get a five year warranty or whatever on uh on these new loaders, I don't know. Um, to me, that would reduce your annual uh costs. And uh I'd just like to see the numbers on switching it out at five or seven years. It's obvious we're keeping them too long. Uh, the fifteen year isn't profitable or payback, so five to seven and we replace it. Maybe that's the way we have to look.
Other comments? I'm not seeing, I got a motion here that may need some slight adjusting. Perth County Council received the Wheel Loader Fleet Review Report. And Perth County Council Direct Staff to include the replacement of equipment asset eleven fifty John Deere Wheel Loader in the two thousand and twenty two capital budget. And after your comment, Councillor Wilhelm, I'm thinking we need to tweak that a little. Unless, but uh and in Bill's report, he does say he would look at the possibility of leasing with the option of owning. So can we get a, do you want to defer this? Or do you want, John?
Thank you, Warden H. Simpson. Uh, I think we can cover off Councillor Wilhelm's concern and or not a, uh, you know, avoid modifying the recommendation here. When we structure this tender, we will include options for a leasing uh for like a five year term and even a three year term. But we'll also include the option for an outright purchase. And when we do that, we're going to ask for um the sort of the longest and most comprehensive warranty package that we can obtain for this unit. And uh and within that tender results report, we can certainly address uh what what Councillor Wilhelm is is considering here. So that information will will be before council uh in in that tender results report.
Okay, yeah, and it does say to include in the budget, it doesn't say it's approved.
Correct.
Okay, so I've got a motion I did read off. I can repeat it, receive the report and that we include direct staff to include the replacement of the equipment asset, John Deere loader, wheel loader in the two thousand and twenty two capital budget. Councillor Wilhelm.
I'd just maybe add in there with options.
Okay. To include this in the budget with the options discussed. Lease purchase warranty, the whole nine yards. Does that work, John? Thumbs up. Okay, so I need to move her in a second or move the Councillor Wilhelm, second or? Councillor Hurley? Last chance for questions. Those in favor? Carrie? Not trying to push you too lot lot fast, but I know three of us have another meeting to go to here before too too long, so we're starting to speed the process up. Okay, um, council reports, who has council reports? Don't see any, but I'm just going to make one little comment. So this past Tuesday, with the help of our HR staff, Maren and Jess and uh our Director of Corporate Services, Annette and myself and uh one of the paramedics, I can't remember who that was. Actually, I don't think I was introduced, though. Anyway, the Christmas dinners that were purchased similar to last year were distributed to all of staff. Oh, and Echdev, Meredith and um helped us as well. And it was a slight variation from last year, but there was something came from every lower tier municipality in that uh package. Just so you're aware, that was done Tuesday and to the best of my knowledge and Annette's knowledge and and maybe Laurie's knowledge, that went over quite well. Anyway, just letting you know that was done. Uh, so there's nothing else there, uh bylaws. We have bylaw number, and you have a conflict on this one, Bob. Bylaw number three eight four nine dash two oh two one, be read a first, second and third time and finally pass the sixteenth day of December two thousand and twenty one. And that is for O P A number one eighty eight, moved by Councillor Calum, second by Councillor McDermott. Those in favor? And that is carried. And then we're going to move to bylaw three eight five zero two oh two one, appointment. Appoint members to committees and boards for two thousand and twenty two. And that is that this be read a first, second and third time and finally pass the sixteenth day of December two thousand and twenty one. And those names to all the committees will be added to that bylaw when it's posted. Moved by Councillor Casenberg, seconded by Councillor McKenzie. Those in favor, that is carried. And we have bylaw three eight five, three eight five one dash two oh two one. Adopt members of council proof of COVID nineteen vaccination policy. Be read a first, second and third time and finally pass the sixteenth day of December two thousand and twenty one, moved by Councillor Wilhelm, seconded by Councillor Casenberg. Those in favor?
I have a question. I had asked for clarification on uh contractors. And so just wondering if this is a time to ask it, because if we if we add contractors, they need to be added to the one whereas. I want to know.
Specifically deals with council members only. So if you want to contract people discussed again, then we'll have to do that in a second, another report.
So through the warden, what we can do, Marion can give an update on that, because right now contractors um uh we're going to deal with um uh an employee contract, uh employee vaccine policy for new hires. And Marion can give an update on certainly the current statuses. Our staff um that are paid through the payroll are required to either be double vaccinated or they have to test twice a week when they're working at the county or um certainly I believe if they're at the lower tiers, they they will be um following that regime as well. But a contractor that is paid through the payroll follows that same protocol. A contractor that is paid as a vendor, um, is, we did not pass a policy um uh implementing that. Um, so those contractors are not, because when they um, when we do our contracts with them and the RFPs, that wasn't a requirement for us to have them uh double vaccinated or testing twice a week. So we don't have that jurisdiction or a policy of relating to external contractors. And I'm certainly, Marion can give that update uh when she speaks to council on the other topic. And she can also give that update when we come back into open.
Uh, I realize that, but if we decide to add contractors, then they should be added to this one whereas because we talk about members of co- council, corporate employees, volunteers and public to access to use county facilities. So if we add the word contractors, then it needs to go into this um resolution, even though it is.
No, I got to correct you. This resolution deals only with council. The last one we passed dealt only with staff. If we need one for contract workers, that has to be a separate resolution.
That's not what I'm saying, Jim. I'm saying, Mr. Warden, that the third bullet talks about who it's going to provide a safe environment for. And so therefore, if we add the word contractors in somewhere, I think they should be in that whereas. I realize this is for um proof of council. But it says also that the provide a safe environment for members of council, corporate employees, volunteers and the public to access. So if we add contractors, they should be in that paragraph, is what I'm saying.
So so through the warden, if I can understand correctly, W. Warden, what you're saying is uh the addition of contractors, just in the phrase for this, is just to ensure that they're listed as being safe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In it, sorry, through the warden, in the bylaw, the whereas statement is just listing off individuals who would be safe because of this bylaw being put in place. So the requests by Deputy Warden to include contractors as being additionally.
As part of that report.
As as part of the, as part of the bylaw, it's listing as member, members of council be safe, corporate employees are safe, volunteers, public are safe, because this file is put in place, as well as contractors.
But not, sorry, excuse me, through the warden, but it would not mean that we would require those external contractors to be double vaccinated or test twice a week.
True, that's my understanding, as well as I I think Deputy Warden can clarify.
We need to have that discussion, so I'd like to table this bylaw until we have that discussion. So later in the meeting.
And too bad we had to discuss that when the report was given. Okay, so I did have a mover and a second on this uh bylaws, so we can, if they're willing, we will table that. And I think it was Councillor Casenberg, you were one of them, were you not? Councillor Wilhelm, are you willing to table that? And Councillor Casenberg wanted to table that, so they were going to table that. Until we get more information, but. Okay. We may be dealing with it later before the day is over. Okay, um, we're going to table after the time being. Notice the motions. Other business, Councillor McDermott.
Uh, I'm not sure it's other business, but uh uh Deputy Warden, A, gets brought up about YouTube and the legalities of that and all, I kind of think, uh, would it be possible that and that could just kind of explain that, one of the means, just make a small report on that, like, if you use YouTube, what's the legalities of doing that? Because it eventually gets kind of confusing about it to use it, what is uh who owns what and that kind of stuff, if I could just.
So so through the warden, I can probably just answer your question now. You know, legal. Anytime you post a video, regardless of the platform, I know that one of the lower tiers uses Facebook, you lose control. So anybody can can download it at any point in time. In terms of ownership, the county retains copyright over the video, but if somebody manipulates it, if they do it for profit, then that would be a copyright violation. But typically, if someone is manipulating the video, they're doing it to um uh for some purpose, whether it's to embarrass or to use it against you. Um, it's not for profit, so arguably, we can assert copyright over that. So we do lose ownership of the video. We lose control, even though copyright resides with us. Anybody can still take it. Proving a copyright violation is difficult, it's time consuming, and as I mentioned, you have to show that it's for profit, so I I hope that answers your question.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other business? Announcements? We have an announcement from the CEO.
Thank you through the warden, um, Warden H. Simpson, members of County Council and staff. As we finish our final scheduled council meeting for twenty twenty one, I wanted just to take a moment to make a few remarks. Twenty twenty one marked another year where the pandemic continued to cause fluctuating circumstance to our operations. The county remained nimble and continued to adapt and deliver a variety of key projects and priorities. Council receives a copy of your twenty twenty two draft budget today. And that draft budget is reflective of departmental work plans that will continue to be driven by the goals and priorities of the corporate strategic plan, council direction that you've given us, and considers the resources required to deliver effective and efficient programs and services to our citizens, businesses and stakeholders. I'd like to thank the warden and Deputy Warden and members of County Council for your continued leadership and support of county staff in their work. The support of council for this work is greatly appreciated. And I wanted to also take a moment to thank county staff for their continued hard work, dedication and resilience throughout this year. I want to wish everyone a safe, happy and healthy holiday season and look forward to continuing our work together for a strong twenty twenty two.
Okay. Nothing else? I may have a few comments before we close, but uh I need a motion to go into closed session in accordance with section two thirty nine of the Municipal Act. A closed session pertaining to a matter pertaining to labor relations and a matter pertaining to rerelations, HR and also a verbal update with regards to legal negoti- legal uh en- entities. Moved by, and that is at eleven forty six, moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Wilhelm, those in favor, carried, so we need. Perfect. So we do have the um motion that we tabled in open session, that was the bylaw for the proof of vaccination for council, and it was moved and seconded. It was tabled. Are you willing to bring that back on the table for a vote? I got a yes here, the seconder was Councillor Casenberg. That's a yes, okay, those in favor of that motion? That is all carried, perfect. Okay. Confirmatory bylaw number three eight five two dash two oh two one. To confirm the proceedings of the council, the corporation, the county of Perth that has regularly meeting held today, summer sixteenth, is read a first, second and third time and finally passed December sixteenth, two oh two one, moved by Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Duncan, those in favor? And before we adjourn, I want to wish all of council and staff a happy holiday season, a prosperous new year, and I'm going to add a safe move here. And thank you very much for your support. Move on, because we've got another meeting to attend and I want to go home first, so I can actually have some one uh motion to adjourn at twelve forty five. Councillor McDermott, Councillor Wilhelm, those in favor, it's carried, thank you very much.
Merry Christmas, everyone.